How you doing, Scary?
Hey, Bill, how's it going?
Not bad, not bad at all.
Looking good there, just got a haircut?
You guys are live, just to let you know. It's five, it's five o'clock, we're just waiting for Councilor Conway. I did speak with him earlier and he said he was attending, I'm not sure if he is attending via Zoom or in person, but we'll just give him a minute or two. And then we will begin, I do know that there's a 6:00 PM school committee meeting advertised, so we're gonna get right, we'll go get right into it. Well, it's, uh, it's 5:03, so why don't we begin knowing that we do have limited time? And I think we'd like to begin with the presentation anyway, from the Superintendent and Billy Joe Turner regarding the school department budget. So I'm sure Mr. Conway will be joining us, joining us soon. But without further ado, why don't, this is a joint meeting of the school committee and city council finance subcommittee to discuss the FY21 budget of the school department. Then at 6:00 PM, there is, is it a hearing or is it a regular school?
Committee meeting.
It's a hearing, so subsequent to this, there'll be a hearing on the budget. So with that, Mr. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Chairman Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Conway. Counselor Noon.
Here.
Subcommittee, subcommittee person Dakota. Subcommittee, subcommittee person Hoi.
Here.
Subcommittee person Martin.
Here.
Five, five present.
Five present, so thank you. Also in attendance, let me just also mention there's other elected officials. Ms. Darty, Ms. Clark, we also have representatives from the city side, the Chief Financial Officer, Connor Baldwin, Chief Financial Officer of the city side, Mary Joe Turner, Superintendent of Schools. Oh, thank you, Mr. Dakota, there are two members of the city council joining us Zoom, Counselor Chow and Counselor Samaris. Anybody else, we had the city auditor here, I'm sorry, sir?
Casey Nelson.
Casey Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay, wanted to make sure, good. And the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Hall. So introductions, we already talked about the purpose of this meeting, so without any further ado, Mr. Superintendent, and then you can turn it over to whomever you see fit. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. and Madame Chair. Tonight we'll share with you our annual budget outlook, which is the 9/12 continuation of the month-to-month budgets that we've been working through in this unprecedented circumstance we find ourselves in. First, I'd like to make sure I thank the city CFO Connor Baldwin for all of his collaboration through this unprecedented time, and make sure I also recognize Chief Financial Officer Turner, who will share with you the full accounting of this year's budget. This process and this work, and it looks like we're sharing, they're sharing the screen, this work for us began all the way back at the beginning of the closure, moving through multiple scenarios with our budgeting process. Oftentimes people refer to contingency planning, in this budget environment, we didn't have a Plan A and then contingencies, we didn't know what the fiscal outlook would be. Under the guidance from, of the school committee, we built multiple scenarios that included everything from realizing the full Student Opportunity Act, which became very quickly wishful thinking, all the way down to an overall 5% reduction in state aid, as well as multiple scenarios in between, including level funding and level service budgets. We built out all of those scenarios in anticipation of this day, knowing that we ultimately would receive our annual revenue forecast from the state as well as the city. Now that work was guided by our strategic planning work, which we began in the fall of last year. We adapted our strategic plan from a five-year plan to what we refer to ultimately as a one-plus-four-year plan, knowing that our COVID strategy would be different than what our overarching strategy was, but it needed to be aligned. These four areas here, these four focus areas have guided our work through our fiscal planning. You will see that our budget is a financial plan for our educational plan. We start with our educational plan, we then fund it. Here, our four focus areas should be pretty commonplace to this subcommittee, to the city council, and certainly is to our school committee. Physical health, mental wellness, fiscal prudence, and maintaining flexibility. Those are focus areas within our overarching goals, those are focus areas that you will see reflected throughout this budget. Ms. Turner, I'll turn the floor over to you to share with the subcommittee all of the steps we have taken to ultimately realize a balanced budget, which does work on behalf of our students and families, in order to ensure a meaningful learning environment during these unprecedented times. Ms. Turner?
So the presentation includes summary information, so that you'll have a great, an overview of both the revenue and the expense side of the lower public school budget. The first slide is the general fund revenue. I hear myself echoing, do I need to shut something off?
No, you're, you're good, they'll adjust it inside.
Okay, so the general fund revenue, with FY20 Chapter 70 funding, we had $163 million. That jumped to $166.9 million. That was a $3.9 million increase. We had a $16.3 million city cash last year. This year, it was decreased to 15.7, which is a $623,000 reduction. That's a net increase of $3.3 million. The next slide is a summary of budget balancing strategies. The FY20 budget was $179 million. We had to have, there were necessary additions, like COVID expenses of $7.3 million, contractual increases of $5.4 million. There was a fair student funding school increases of $2 million that went directly to the schools. That included compliance-type costs such as ELL teachers. And there's miscellaneous costs which include copiers, transportation, those type of costs. This would have been $15.8 million in increases. The required budget would have been $195 million. Had we had a level-funded budget, we would have been $15.8 million in the hole. But FY21 revenue increase increased by the 3.3 million, so that offset the deficit. The COVID grants of $4.9 million that we received, that offset the deficit. The additional revenue totaling $8.2 million was the total amount of additional revenue that offset the deficit. The other way we balanced the budget was through the budget balancing strategies such as pre-purchasing, technology, supplies. We were able to pre-purchase using savings from FY20. We also did a central office reduction of almost a million dollars, that totaled in like 10 positions. We increased our offset to the outer district tuition by $1.3 million, and we used our ESAR grant of $4.7 million to offset the health insurance account. That balanced the budget. Any questions on that slide?
I think we'll have questions, but why don't we just go through the presentation?
All right, perfect. So details of the additions, the COVID expenses included remote learning technology, learning management systems, additional teachers, additional support staff and differentials, PPNE, and unexpected costs. Contractual increases included only step increases, it does not include raises. The fair student funding school increases included assistant principal, instructional specialist, over 20 teachers including ELL compliance teachers, parers, tutors, career counselor, student service specialist for the freshman academy, parent liaisons, and school allocation increases. Miscellaneous, the miscellaneous additions that you saw on the previous page included changes to the copiers, leases, salary adjustments, which include when someone is higher of less than budgeted, then the budget looks like there's a decrease in that salary line when it's just an adjustment to a salary. And the other would be transportation. Details of reductions, due to the savings in the FY20 budget, we were able to reduce the FY21 budgeted expenses by pre-purchasing technology, supplies, and text, and school allocation supplies. And despite the additional revenue, we still faced a deficit. We reduced central office functions by approximately $1 million. These positions included strategic planner, clerks, director of secondary education, part-time early learning coordinator, collective bargaining council, data coordinator, evaluation team chairperson, and bilingual liaisons. The ETC duties will be combined with the assistant special ed director's duties, and the bilingual liaisons were maintained but now covered by a grant. Another, another method of closing the deficit was by reducing the outer district budget on the general fund by moving the cost to the revolving account side. Since we replenished the revolving accounts using FY20 savings, this is a reasonable risk. And health insurance increased but is listed in the reduction field simply because the ESAR grant is covering $4.7 million. The next slide is simply a summary of the FY21 funding sources. It breaks down all of the information that I've given as far as grants, where the COVID grants fall into the federal funding, state grants which include the circuit breaker and Chapter 70 aid, and then local funding which is the city tax levy. And the next slide is simply a summary of where we stood in 2018 with our revolving accounts, we were actually negative point three. We went up to 1.95% of our overall budget. The goal for 2020 was 2%. We actually projected throughout the year that we would be at 2.3%, but after the savings that we, were realized through transportation and subs, lack of use of subs and transportation, we were able to replenish those revolving accounts, the savings accounts, to 4.5%.
Can you give a dollar figure for that 4.5%?
Yes, we actually have approximately $4 million in the circuit breaker account right now.
Thank you.
The 4.5% is a total of a combination of use of facilities revolving funds, which is about $283,000, and the food service revolving account, which is $3.6 million.
That's fine, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Actually, that was the last.
Oh, that was the last, okay. Good. Okay, um, thank you, thank you for getting us the budget last week, had a chance to go through it. So what is the wish of members of the subcommittee? Let me also recognize in my haste to introduce everybody, certainly the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, Ms. Martin, and another member of the subcommittee, Mr. Hoi. I think I, I missed those two, and Counselor Conway has joined us. So with that, the information is before us, members of the subcommittee, Counselor Noon or I see Mayor Leahy is up in the balcony, joining us. So with that, almost a full complement of members on both sides of elected bodies. So questions from members of the subcommittee, or I have questions, but I'll, I'll let my fellow members go first? Okay. So thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, did you wanna, did you wanna jump in? This is, this is a joint subcommittee, so.
Go through the questions from, absolutely, Rodney, and then, then I can pipe in after.
Okay, great, thank you. So it has been a challenging year, by far, and there's been no easy answers to this, and I have to say quite frankly, while this has been challenging, next year looks, looks dire, looks even worse, quite frankly, which is kind of hard to imagine, given the reduction in local aid. Luckily, there was some, you know, there was some federal funding, particularly for the school side, that was, that was very helpful. So I always, most of the time, I like to look at the hourglass half-full, and this time, I don't have any expectations, one, that we're gonna get any federal funding for cities and towns across the nation, or in Massachusetts. And moving forward, the state budget, trying to close, you know, billions of dollars, is, you know, the message has been kind of clear, that we have some very lean, lean times ahead of us. So with that, through you two, I have to say, there's a couple of concerns that I see, and certainly you outlined one of them, in the outer district cost. But before we get to that point, it's a staggering number, our, the cost to the city, and certainly the school department for out-of-district students. Why is that? What is, I mean, I, I understand the cost behind it, but why is that? I think we have, we, we spend millions, hundreds of millions on education here in the city, and seems like there's nothing that we don't offer yet. I don't have it right in front of me, if I correct, we're about 6.5 million. Is that, is that correct, on just paying for students to go to other school districts? Okay. Let me reflect, let me go through that page then. So what is the reason, what can we do about it? Because I understand that, you know, I understand the use of the revolving fund, you say it's a risk that, you know, you're, you're willing to take. I'm not sure I would do that, but, you know, we have different roles, and just moving forward, because to me, the revolving, replenishing the revolving fund next year, to me, that's, that's a structural deficit, and how, what funding is gonna be used to close that. But can I get in, can I go one step at a time and ask, why 10 million plus for out-of-district students? That, to me, that seems like that's money that should stay in the district.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So our out-of-district costs are for our special education students whose services cannot be met within the district. It's a collaborative process set by federal law for students who are identified with a disability under IDEA. Their disabilities are then supported through an individualized education plan. Our, our team includes parents as well as teachers and support staff that work together around any student's individualized needs. If it's determined by that team that the student's needs exceed offerings within the district, then out-of-district placement is considered. We have extraordinary amount of services within the district, we've been able to bring more students back historically in Lowell to in-district placement versus out-of-district. However, we don't have the full portfolio that the state of Massachusetts and out-of-district services can offer. So in these cases, these are young people whose learning needs are beyond what is provided within the district. We have a lot of opportunities within the district, but we don't have the full range of opportunities that our students and some students require. That's the, that's the summary answer, the costs then are determined by the placement. So whatever the placement is, that would be determined essentially the tuition cost, because the, because the placement's not within our district, they're not necessarily being sent to other school districts. In most cases, they're being sent to specialized placements, specialized schools that serve young people with these particular needs.
Okay, I suspected it was something more than just school choice, which would probably be my follow-up question.
Absolutely.
And I'll find it, but what does that cost to the district?
For the out-of-district placement?
Not for the special ed students, for individuals that may opt to go to another school district.
Ms. Turner, does, is that?
I'm not sure, but I believe it's approximately 100,000.
Okay. Okay, I thought the number of students was significantly more, is that, is that not the case? That's accurate, okay. Okay. And what is the criteria for some that may opt out?
I'm sorry?
What is the criteria, what's the purpose? I'll tell you, I have a neighbor that it's a running disagreement, that goes to Westford Academy, and I say, why not go to the Lowell Public Schools?
Yeah, I think, I think to answer that question, my answer would be anecdotal as best, at best, I don't have hard data tracking each individual decision point, those are decisions based on family needs, family desires, family demand, and in order to provide an accurate answer, I would have to do some significant more research than what I have at my disposal right now.
I think that would be helpful, just for my own edification, first, and secondly, what about the teachers, their students go to school in the district here? I think that was a number that was capped, and do we get that reimbursement from, from DESI?
Are you aware of what the committee members referring to?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, so she, Ms. Martin said they've eliminated, Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add? I just see him shaking and said so, you gotta come up to the mic.
Dr. Hall.
I thought it was about 192 students, it's been eliminated, I think that makes all.
Dr. Hall oversees all of our staffing and HR, so Dr. Hall?
Sure, Ms. Martin was correct, that was negotiated out of the contract, Counselor Elliott, a few years ago.
Okay, good, thank you. Good to know. Members of the subcommittee, I don't wanna, I do have Counselor Conway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, just for a point of clarification, I think that what you bring up is a good point about out-of-district placement, and, and some of the monies that it can cost specializing school, specialized schools. I can remember being on the school committee and, and questioning one of the, one of the bottom-line costs, and Ms. Martin was there for that, and it was $360,000 for one student, and I thought there was a mistake that was made, and it was 10, which I think would have made a little bit more sense, but then when I did a little bit of research on it, it was 360,000 for one student. So again, some of those placements can be extremely expensive. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Billy Joe Turner, how much money did we spend on busing last year? Do you have any idea?
Last year, we, it was minimal, it was probably.
In total, no.
It was closer to, and I'm guessing, because it was half of a year. So if we, we stopped using bussing in March, so I would say, if bussing is approximately 11 million, I would say maybe 6 million.
Okay. So you, so if it was a full year, we're talking 11 million dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how much money are we gonna spend this year? Would you say?
Well, we're, due to the uncertainties of how, whether we're going to be remote or.
Assuming it stays the same as it is, just for assumption.
So we, there was a negotiated rate of paying the bus company 44%. We did not do that last year, this year there was a negotiated rate of 44%. So we're going to spend, if we don't go back to school at all, we'll spend at least like seven, eight million?
Okay.
Of the 11.
Okay, now, the question, the point I'm trying to make here is that when we finally do go back to some normalcy, and, and it looks like you've got a balanced budget at this point, is that correct? Okay, so I'm assuming that we're gonna be down like 4 million or 5 million if we use these same numbers for the following year. Where would those, where would those cuts take place? For the following year?
Mr. Counselor, Ms. Turner, I believe we're budgeted at 100% projection, so if we actually roll back school, meaning we don't use buses, those would be savings that Ms. Turner was referring to before, that we use strategically. So we're forecasting out a, a use of the dollars as, as a need for a full cost, is that accurate, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
So we're not projecting savings within our budget, those, those savings would come back in if we ultimately go full remote, as it did last year. Those would be then up and available for the committee to determine to use strategically.
I also think, Counselor Conway, it's important to note that, because I think you're, you're recognizing what could be anticipated as a structural deficit, but the reality is, is that if we go back to normal and we go back to full busing, we're able to use buses to their full capacity. Right now, we're limited in that we can only have approximately 13 students per, per bus, where it would normally be 22, I think, for older, for middle school and.
60.
Oh, 60, there you go, so. You'd have a dramatic increase in that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if, if it stays the way it is for, for this particular point, that's what I'm looking for down, down the road, how are we going to, you know, close that, that potential gap in, in the budget, which obviously has got to, it's got to be there somewhere.
We're not, we're not assuming a savings, we're assuming a use of a full fleet, the full fleet's at our disposal, so we're projecting right now 100% use of that funding. If for some reason, we end up in a full remote scenario whereby we're not using buses, a portion of that, of that projection, 56% for the time period of use, would roll back into our budget, because it wouldn't hit our actuals. So it's in our budget, but it wouldn't hit our actuals, at which point it would be reconciled by the committee. That's what happened last year, which is why we had the pre-purchases and the savings earlier last year. We forecast 100% use of the contract.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Martin, did you wanna, oh, you were gonna answer for him, okay. Okay. So just on transportation, I forget where we're at, or who's next in line. So the projection is to use the 11 million this year, because you're providing, you're providing transportation not to as many students because of COVID restrictions, but pending school continues, as is, that's, that's gonna be absorbed. Can I ask you, what are, what are the students that are not able to get the bus? What is, how are they getting to school? And I know, I know in the past, Catholic schools used to be part of this, and that's no longer. What is, how many students are we looking at, Mr. Superintendent?
There is, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Hall for our transportation counts as our Chief Operating Officer, but I can tell you, this is some of the difficulty and complexity of reopening within a COVID environment. So what the school committee undertook back in the beginning phases of August was a redesign of their transportation policy. So we moved from the standard transportation policy that, that is a K to 8 policy, then we moved it and moved it back to the state requirements, which is K to 6. Then we additionally changed our school assignment policy so that kindergarteners are within walking distance. The last thing that we did in adjustment to the policy, policy is on state requirements, it's more than two miles, so we moved to the state-required transportation, because we have reduced capacity on our buses. And this actually wasn't done as a cost-saving measure, there just aren't buses available. Every school district is working through this. We went through significant negotiations with our transportation providers, we have the full fleet available, but the full fleet, as the chairwoman said, allows only approximately a third of the capacity. So it's a combination of two things, one, an adjustment to policy with the availability of fleet, and then two, making sure we can communicate with families that if they're outside of that policy, then an in-person seat would require self-transportation. Now this is important to also note, it's not only, this is not only a strategy that's necessitated upon us because of the limited capacity, but it's also a strategy to mitigate spread of COVID-19. If we provide more students on a school bus, that's more intermingling of what we call our cohorts, our classrooms are set and structured almost like bubbles, I don't walk into a classroom, I only go to the doorway, any visitor doesn't enter the classroom, and we keep our students in cohort. And we keep our students in cohorts as part of our movement around the school. So fewer students on a school bus limits the number of interaction of students. But we did look into the possibility even to expand the fleet. The school committee did take a, make a decision to expand for special education busing to allow for more students on the buses. But there just aren't buses available. Dr. Hall, do you have the exact numbers of student transport?
Counselor Elliot, there's about 600 being transported now. Due to the change in policy, there's approximately 500 that don't have transportation this year, but would have qualified last year had the policy stayed the same.
There are 600 students being bused?
Currently, yes.
Currently, we have some, some of our fleet is remaining because we expect to expand in-person capacity. So there are some parts of our fleet that are remaining. If we filled our current fleet, then that would mean as we expand capacity, there wouldn't be transportation available for students on our next phase of reopening. So some of this is routing in phases, anticipating more students back to school, which we also know that the pandemic could require, as we talked about financially, fewer students.
That's an important piece of information, because the $11 million is not transporting 600 students. That 11 million is part of an additional phase in, which you could anticipate if things change and the learning model changes. Then that's where you're looking at some savings, okay.
We also don't pay by a per student. We do pay for per bus. So the reduction in students on a bus does increase the per-student cost for transportation and necessitates that requirement.
I just wanted folks at home to know, we're not paying 11 million dollars to be busing five or six.
That's a good point.
Students, I mean, because that's, so that's good to know. There is a phase in process and that will. Normally, if this were full operations, 11 million dollars, how many students are we busing?
Dr. Hall, how many bus students do we typically transport across our, I believe we have 66 general education buses in our fleet, as well as a special education fleet as well? Do you have the numbers currently, Dr. Hall?
That's an important element. I know the special ed transportation is also a big factor.
I don't have.
No, that's okay. I know I'm asking a lot of questions with, for data that's not easy at your disposal, but it's, it'd be helpful to know.
And the 600 I gave you, Counselor, might have been, those were from last week's totals, so I don't have the current one as of Monday, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I can continue to ask questions, but I'll turn off. Counselor Noon, Counselor Conway, members of the school committee, finance committee, members of the school committee, just, you know, kind of just jump in as we go from subject matter to subject matter. Counselor Chow, Counselor Samaras, anything. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman. I realize the difficult year that we have, and I thank you, Ms. Turner, for, you know, trying to balance this. This seemed to be a very recent budget from your end of it. And lucky that you were able to do, whoever did, wrote the grant, got some grant, federal grant, to kind of offset it, the $4 million plus and other. But the worry part is, has remained that, you know, this year, you know, the schools and the cities is able to balance its budget without increasing taxes. Particularly with the, the city did increase a little taxes, but we hope trying to not doing that next year. But it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be possible, particularly the school side. It's really, the chairman is correct, it's very concerning. So, and I'm really, you know, glad that this continuing dialogue and working relationship between both the city and the school, and also the joint subcommittee, there are some tying up to do as well, I suspect, with the school. So is there, Mr. Superintendent, is there any plans, you know, if things remain as is, or even if at some point there will be an increase in term of, you know, in-person learning, there will be staff that, you know, that normally have duty to do, to perform, and no longer able to perform. Are we continuing to pay those staff? And is that, that's what I'm talking about, tying up. Is there any plan for doing so?
So we're not, we're not paying any staff that's not meeting the obligations of their work requirements. What we have, so there's nobody's being paid that's not meeting the obligation of their work requirement. What we've actually done is, through the course of negotiations, working to create greater flexibility among the staff that we currently have to make sure that we can meet the increased requirements within our school buildings utilizing our current staff. So I'm not gonna delve deeper into what those negotiations look like until those agreements are made public. However, I would say our approach has been to create greater flexibility among our staff, current staff, to meet the flexibility requirements within our buildings. We also are, have been clear that if staff's unable to meet their work functions, very different than in the spring, if you recall, which I think is what you're referring to, Mr. Counselor. In the spring, it was stay-at-home orders, on immediate closure. We didn't know how long it was gonna move, and the direction we moved, I believe as a city and as a school district, was to make sure that we were staff ready to go as soon as we came back into learning, traditionally speaking. Now, currently, we're in a different place. If there's any stay-at-home orders or any stay-at-home requirements where employees can't meet the functions of their job requirements, they're no longer gonna be on payroll, very different than the spring. We do have work, remote work assignments though, so I wanna make sure that's a difference.
Thank you. I also realize this, you know, I understand the student who needs specialized school or specialized instruction that gets sent to specialized school. That Ms. Turner indicated that they roughly $10 million paid to that. So I'm more concerned with those that got opt-out to other districts, school district. Is there a policy, and this policy still remains, is this policy is well-known, is all the parents are entitled to that? Or how does that policy apply?
It's a state, it's a state law that allows school districts to either to opt out of. Locally in Lowell, we don't take other students out from outside of the district into Lowell. That's a school committee decision. Each spring, the school committee goes through that analysis. Other school committees around the state go through that same analysis. So if the school committee determines that the school district will take in students from out of district, then that's part of the state allowance here in Massachusetts the school district can. If the school district does, then it's the family choice that moves through their assignment process. In Lowell, we don't, we don't do out-of-district placements inside of Lowell. That preceded my tenure and has extended beyond to this year.
But those parents that, those parents that do are going out of the district to other school, they apply through the city, the school department, and how do they apply and how did they get to do that?
They go, they typically go to the district that they're looking to attend. They follow that district's requirements for application, then they'll notify us of withdrawal to enter and enroll in the new school district. So they'll start by enrolling in the new school district, then they'll withdraw from Lowell Public Schools and enter the new school district.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? We'll go to the Zoom folks, Counselor Chow, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your holding this meeting. I want to thank the school subcommittee finance members for joining us on this very important meeting. Through you to probably Dr. Hall, I just want to have some clarification on the transportation issue. The way I understand it, so there are 25% that are participating in the in-person school right now. And the transportation, the busing provided for 600 students. And there are 500 students, are these the 500 students that are part of the 25% in-person students that need transportation? Is that correct?
Dr. Hall, do you want to provide clarification for the counselor?
Yes, Counselor, so these were the kids that were transported last week. I don't have this week's current projections, but of the 25% that applied in the lottery and got seats and also qualified for transportation, 600 were getting transportation. However, we reduced transportation from grade one to six this year versus K to 12 and for two miles. So there would have been 500 more kids within that 25% opt-in pool that would have got transportation if we had last year's policy in place. So the new policy resulted in about cutting about half from those transported.
Okay, so, and the way I understand too is that the budget, the $11 million for the transportation, that's for a full operation. I guess I don't understand that if the budget were set for a full operation, and it's actually overall, it's only 25% of the students going in or, or just for the students that need transportation. It's only a fraction of that that need transportation. And I don't understand why they would still be, you know, regardless of the specific number that were provided last week or the students that might have gone up this week that had transportation. Just for the understanding, I'm not, we don't have to talk about specific numbers of students. But I guess I still don't understand, you know, if there's budget there to provide for transportation costs and you have the fleet there. I don't understand why the students were still, that still need transportation, don't get it. You know, I mean, are there like all the buses being used? Do we need additional buses? Or like, you know, I mean, if it was full operation, these students would normally get it. And there's budget there, and these are students that have been selected through the lottery that pretty much to follow the guidelines and the protocol of COVID-19. I don't understand the missing link here.
Thank you, Counselor. If I could, Mr. Chair, there would, it would be a question of school committee policy. Ultimately, the policy was set so that we could forecast and commit to something that we can deliver on for families for the full year. So right now, we have 25% of our students on campus, but the goal is to increase that number. If ultimately we provided transportation to all students who are on campus right now, that would mean students who come onto campus later might not have access to transportation, one. Or two, we would have to notify families that you had transportation before, but you're no longer gonna have transportation going forward. So it's a risk analysis and it's a commitment decision based on policy. We're implementing the policy we have, which is based on a forward-thinking, make commitment to families. Ultimately, the committee would have to consider another transportation policy decision, which could work on a quarterly basis, which is what it sounds like you're suggesting. That would be a different, a different policy, a different implementation of that policy. Right now, we actually, we have a lottery in place for transportation too, as well. That if we had more desire, more demand for transportation beyond who's allowable by policy, then that would go through a lottery system as well. We didn't have to utilize that lottery system for this first phase of 25%. But as we go up in capacity, which some may say is an optimistic outlook given the COVID data, but that's how we're planning going forward, then we would have to utilize more of the lottery. So it's just, it's a risk analysis, it's forecasting, and it's a current policy decision that all weighs in. But our current forecast on busing is to make sure, as Counselor Conway put out, we're not creating a deficit by creating overly aggressive forecasts within the budget. So we're projecting 100% use of fleet, which has then a reduced capacity of fleet. That's further reduced as we have reduction in enrollment. Dr. Hall, are you referring to the full 25% or the 5%? It might be important for them to know.
Okay, are we all set?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I lost audio for the last 30 seconds. I think Dr. Boyd was asking Dr. Hall a question, which I did not hear.
The question was, when he was referring to 25%, and the response was yes.
Wonderful. Great, great, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Counselor Conway?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, oh, there we go. Now you switched over. Yeah, just, folks on Zoom, just chime in because we don't, I can't see all of you. Thank you.
All right, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, actually, you brought up the issue of the revolving fund. And, but what I heard was, we're gonna take a chance with this fund. Now, the previous school committee did a lot to replace that revolving fund that had been depleted. And as you had stated, you also stated that we don't look at a good year coming up. And to take the money out of this fund at this particular point with no way that I can see for the next budget process to be able to refill that fund. So I need more of an answer, or I'd like more of an answer than we're gonna take a chance. That's hard to comprehend at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent or Ms. Turner, which one?
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to the superintendent. If he wants to.
Okay.
Kick it over, he can. Ms. Superintendent?
Thank you. I want to recognize the former mayor, because he was part of a lot of those projections to replenish these revolving accounts. One thing, Mr. Mayor, is even beyond, and you'll see within your packet, we were able to replenish the revolving accounts well beyond even what our projection goal was in terms of planning for the current year. Ms. Turner, can you share a little bit about our risk analysis and forecasting in terms of utilizing those revolving accounts right now, as well as replenishing going forward?
Ms. Turner?
So the reason why I thought, I am, you know, of the same mindset, I do not like taking chances. The fact that we depleted our revolving accounts is like living without a savings account, and that's what left us in these dire circumstances. So I'm completely, you know, on the opposite side of that. The reason why I thought that we could take the risk now is because we replenished the account to the maximum. We cannot put any more money into that account. And what happens is we're gonna get a circuit breaker reimbursement this year, which is 75% of anything over the foundation amount, which is approximately $3.5 million. So when that $3.5 million comes in, it's gonna be $7.5 million in a revolving account. And that would be exceeding the allowable amount that we can have in the. So in other words, I'm countering the risk that we may get cited for having too much in a revolving account. So I'm actually playing it safe on both ends right now. I don't want to deplete the account because I know we need it for future years. And I would never want to live in that type of environment where we don't have a backup plan. But I know that we have the $3.5 million coming in this year. I also know that if we do have savings from substitutes or transportation, that's another way to replenish this account again. So even with us using the additional offset, I still feel like we're gonna have a couple of million dollars in there, plus the 3.5 coming in.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, you gotta be careful with that circuit breaker. I completely agree. Anybody else? Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. For a number of years, there's always been the comment, the city side and the school side. I think we've, for people that have any type of history here, understand what I'm talking about. And it always used to bother me that it was the city side and the school side. And as far as I'm concerned, there's only one side, and that's the side where the kids are in. And as far as I'm concerned, you have to work together. Now, I think the coronavirus obviously has brought out a lot of negative things in so many different ways. And we can't continue in this, in this direction, needless to say. I think that one thing that's extremely important, we've talked about it, you know, year after year, I don't know how many times. I'm sure everybody here has talked about it, and that is good communication. And I think with the good communication and accurate communication, we're not gonna run into perhaps some of the problems that we've had recently. I think in order to do that, and I mentioned it on the floor a number of months ago, that, and I gave somewhat of a speech like this, but I said, what we need to do so we don't run into a problem, we need to have good communication between the city council, the city side, and the school committee and the school side. And in order to do that, we need to meet on a regular basis. And I think that's important. And I know that we've had financial problems in the past because some bills, unpaid bills came to the city council floor, and there were a lot of questions on that. And that's what prompted the idea that, you know, we need to work closer so that we do not have to run into a problem like this and scramble for additional monies, or trying to find some monies. Because everyone, you know, you talk to the city manager, and the city manager is working constantly with her team to try to have a good budget that's going to certainly give us services in the city, make the city safe. And there's no additional monies floating around. You know, we always used to say something about, is there another draw, we can pull out some money? Well, there are no more draws anymore. We don't have that kind of money. So that's why I think it's. don't have that kind of money. So, that's why I think it's very important that we work smart. And in order to do that, the left hand has to know what the right hand is doing. And what I mentioned, and I don't think it has happened, not to the extent that it should, but we need to have, especially the financial part, has to meet on a regular basis, face-to-face, Zoom, whatever you want to call it, not just by an email. And I don't want to get into all the details on this, but I think that from this point on, that if there's an issue that comes up, we work as a team instead of backtracking and saying, oh, jeez, we ran into a problem here, what are we going to do? I think it's much more important that we, we respect each other to the point that if we have an issue, we have a problem, we make a mistake, we put it on the table, and we fix it. I mean, that's what, that's what individuals are supposed to do. And certainly entities like the city council and the school committee, we need to work together on that. So, again, done with my little speech, but I think that this is the second or third time I've mentioned it, and we need to make sure there is that direct line of communication, so we're not going to run into some of the problems that we have here. Because I'll tell you, both sides of the fence, we have a lot of good people. Everyone wants to make this work, but nobody wants fingers pointed at each other either, because right away, it becomes, you know, sometimes it almost reminds me of my two daughters where they're arguing back and forth, and it's her fault, it's no, it's this one's fault. You know what? It's time that we work together. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Other questions, at least from members of the council? I know the school department. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Chairman Elliot. I know we're running out of time here. Got about 10 minutes left if we have that. If Mr. Baldwin could just explain the reduction to city cash, I know it's related to COVID, but could you just maybe just touch base on that 643,000?
Mr. Baldwin?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Howie. Through you, Mr. Chair. The funding level for FY 2021 was based on a number of factors. The city took a reduction from the unrestricted aid in the 2021 revised budget from the state. And as of the last year's net school spending certification, the city was above the net school spending requirement by approximately $5 million. With all of that in mind and the challenges on the city, part in the direction from the city council to hold the line on taxes as best possible, a reduction was made to the cash support to the school, not necessarily the total support in the amount of $600,000. That amount, we believe will be made up in spades on the maintenance of effort, and that goes to the work that's been done by the DPW in the schools, the amount of spending that has happened on HVAC work, et cetera. Those costs are all calculated as part of the net school spending requirement, and the city does believe that we'll continue to meet the requirement.
Thank you. And last thing. So, right now, all we have to do as the school committee is to vote on the 9/12 budget tonight, and then we vote on the annual budget, right? Isn't that already been approved by the city council? It's like $182,690,537?
Yeah. So, that's, yeah, the local aid along with the city contribution has been approved, correct? So, to answer your question, you'll be adopting the school committee budget that includes that figure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that our chief operating officer can give you the updated figure of transportation. He provided you the number based on the 5% entry prior to this week. Now, we are up to 25%. Dr. Hall, can you give the exact transportation figures? I know Counselor Chow was asking that. I want to make sure he has the accurate data.
Just for an update, Mayor, sorry, Counselor Elliot, we went up to 669 regular education students. I failed to include in the initial numbers 458 sped students also being transported.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. As Mr. Howie mentioned, we're running up against the posted, Ms. Martin?
You know, and as we're wrapping up this, as we've stated, we're going into our public budget hearing right after this, so we will be submitting our final, our final budget to the city at the conclusion of that. I think for many of the sentiments expressed here tonight, I certainly am always a fan of communication, so I can say from the, as Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, I am absolutely open to any kind of schedule that we'd like to put in place. I agree that I think having, and we've, we've done it in the past, and we can certainly do it moving forward, had regularly scheduled meetings, which did give an opportunity for the two bodies to be able to work together and be able to keep each other abreast of the different challenges and changing situations. So, I think as we move forward, we can certainly connect with the mayor, who is kind of the person that connects us all, to come up with some proposed schedules of Finance Subcommittee, and if there are any other, you know, subcommittees from both bodies that we think would benefit from this kind of a back and forth, we could certainly, I think, assure you that we'd be open and enthusiastic to participate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I completely concur, and I think we were kind of on a regular schedule until the whole COVID thing kicked in, and then we went to Zoom, and I think that kind of complicated things. But I think it makes sense moving forward. Appreciate the information on the transportation. I'm sure you're as concerned as I am about moving forward. I know, Ms. Turner, you are. I know there are structural deficits in here, and that thankfully, there were funding that came through from the federal government. My crystal ball is no more clear than anyone else, however, given the magnitude of the money and funding that came through initially and sort of the stalemate that's taken place, you know, $5 million in CARES Act reopening money, state tech grant, those money probably are not going to be around next time. So, we do, we clearly have our work cut out. Same thing in the state, the city side, revenues, local receipts, you know, money that we usually anticipate, you know, hiring freezes will stay in place, and I think we really have to sharpen our pencils moving forward. So, I appreciate the information and getting the document, have a chance to talk about it. I did want to ask just a couple of questions. There are a number of positions in here that were not funded, that I would say are academically related. And first and foremost, and I just want to go through a couple, and I know I got three minutes, but, you know, positions like Director of Curriculum and Instruction at the high school, Director of Secondary Education, Coordinator of Testing and Assessment, there's a few more. I won't go through all of them. There's been some social workers that I think that are naturally very important that have been, that have been cut. Why those positions have been cut, first and foremost? And secondly, can you also explain the structure or the, just the parity or lack of parity in salaries in some of these? I know some of them are probably driven by collective bargaining, but I do know, Mr. Superintendent, salaries in your office are pretty significant in relation to salaries throughout the rest of the district. You have a million dollars in your office, and then I really, I go through and I look for some parity, and I don't see it. So, question one, and then question two.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the, some of the positions you're referring to are school-based budgeting decisions. We're in a structure of school site autonomy. We fund our schools based on their student populations through a fair, what we call a fair student funding model. The needs of our students drive their funding. Then, the school site councils, under the leadership of the principal, determine what their school budgets are. Some of the positions you refer to are school positions that were determined by the school site council, even though they have more money in the school, they might have made the adjustment. Some of the positions you're referring to are line item coding, changes within our accounting codes, and Ms. Turner can share with you those. Others are reductions centrally. They're reductions centrally to close the gap that we have in terms of funding versus expenses. The Director of Secondary Education is an example of that. The Coordinator of Research and Testing is another example of that. We had to cut, and what we chose to cut was centrally to make sure that we cut as far away from our kids as possible to make sure we ensured the services, the direct services to our students stayed intact. So, within these reductions centrally, we also increased our expenses on the school side, which was a $2 million increase in school site funding that then worked through our school site budgeting process. What you're referring to in terms of salaries of our executive chiefs, they're actually directly in alignment with surrounding districts in terms of the marketplace for those positions. In most cases, they're below the marketplace for those positions as you look at comparative salaries across the district. The difference what you're looking at in terms of administrators that are 12 months to 10 months can also create the difference in salaries. Most of our district is staffed by 10-month employees. Not all of them are 12-month. The third difference that you could be looking at is also driven by contracts. So, our union contracts have different escalators in, and where somebody comes in on one of those escalators would determine their salary. They're driven by collective bargaining. But I would tell you, our positions and our salaries, particularly those that are non-union driven, are often below market value when you compare it to surrounding similar districts. The one I know full well, the Boston comparison across to Boston, $20,000 to $30,000 more for similar, similar level positions, and then they have additional support staffed below. We looked at other comparisons across to other districts, and ours are consistently below those values across similar districts.
Thank you. We're up against it. We will have another meeting soon, because I do want to continue this, because I understand your explanation. Moving forward, look at these, looking at these structural deficits, looking what the future is coming from the state, just not sustainable, in my opinion, and I'm, you know, so those discussions will continue. Thank you for making time before your meeting. I wanted, I thought it was important to have this discussion before the budget is adopted. So, I don't know what the plan, what works for folks. Time-wise, does anybody have any suggestions when we can meet again? I like to leave a meeting rather than just leave it wide open, because I think that's kind of, is there a time? I know some folks work earlier or later that works for folks. Does 5:00 work for folks? I'm thinking about staff that's worked all day, and they're here, and they can come to the meeting, Ms. Martin?
I would say if 5:00 is a little tight. Traditionally, our meetings start at 6:30, so I think if we could say 5:30, if we did that on a Wednesday, but again...
I think, I think you're right. I think I just, we just did this knowing it would be a one hour. 4:30 was too much. It's never enough time, but 5:30, I think that makes sense. So, we'll do that, because I do see, Mr. Superintendent, on this school choice, it's almost 900,000, and that comes right off the cherry sheet. So, if we can get that information, school choice, why so many students are not, you know, staying in the district? That would be helpful. Maybe it's just continuing, but right off the state cherry sheet, it's an assessment against the city for school choice, so that'd be helpful.
Does that include charters?
No.
Yeah, I know.
Let's not go on charters. $30 million in charter schools. So, with that, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Councilor Noon to recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending and taking time. I think this is certainly very helpful. Members of the city council, I'm sure the school department and members have been talking about it quite a bit since May, but I think it's helpful. I appreciate everybody coming here. This meeting stands in recess.
Thank you.